When you're ready, at five o'clock.
All right. Okay, we've started recording. It's 4:59, so we'll give it the one minute.
Is Rebecca on? There she is.
Yes, I am.
Okay. We'll call the meeting of the Committee of the Whole together to order and ask that Lou Note roll call.
So, no, it looks like everybody but Bill.
Okay. Well, he should be on. He's back from Colorado, so we're anticipating him. The announcements, the Committee of the Whole will convene into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, 1G of the Wisconsin statutes for purposes of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation to which it is or is likely to become involved. This one is tax assessment litigation with Walgreens. For items four minutes from Committee of the Whole on April 20th, 2021, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Jim Simpson moved. Is there a second?
I second.
Rebecca's second. All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. And if I can remind everyone, when you make a motion or a second, please say your name because it isn't always possible for Lou to catch everyone. All right.
Geez.
Colleen?
I said, well, Lou, geez.
All right. Items for discussion, 5.1, discussion regarding sponsorships at dog park, and would ask Reese McCaskill to walk us through that.
Yes, so we got a memo out a little late, so basically I just wanted to kind of capture what we're hoping to do. We had a local business reach out and inquire about doing a sponsorship sign at the dog park. We did check our current outfield sponsorship agreement and policy and then also checked with Brandy for side ordinances, and it would fall underneath all of that, so we would like to basically just add this on to our already existing program, and then we would be able to use those funds to do improvements to the dog park. So I'm really just looking for the green light that you guys would support us doing this and kind of go from there.
Well, thank you. Are there any questions for Reese?
Can you tell us who the business is?
Oh, oh, gosh. Greg, do you know off the top of your head? No, they, I'd have to look back in my emails.
Okay, that's right. Okay. Yeah.
Okay, while she's looking, as long as it's not interfering with the operations of the park, I would be supportive, but I guess what Reese is looking for are thumbs up. Jim, we can't see your face at all.
You're just blacked out.
He's in Witness Protection Program. The business is reporting for duty.
All right, it looks like we got thumbs up all around Reese. It looks like it's a go from our perspective. Thank you, Jim. It's helpful to see your smiling face.
Thank you all.
Okay. Next item, discussion of enacting an ordinance requiring property owners to shovel around fire hydrants. This is a general discussion. Remember, we had someone appear before us last meeting, I think, to suggest that it would be a good thing to ask residents to shovel around hydrants, but nothing is, you know, just as simple as that, so we were hoping we could discuss it tonight and get a sense for where the board is. So I would open the floor for discussion.
Questions?
Rebecca?
Had some discussions with different folks around town, and they brought up some very good questions. One, are we willing to cite every resident who has served by a particular hydrant when it has not been cleared according to an ordinance? Would it not be better to potentially do an education campaign about the importance of keeping them cleared rather than taking this step to actually create a new ordinance? And have we actually had anything burned because of something like this? So these were some concerns that people actually, and some suggestions for solutions.
Okay. Anybody have any comments on any of those? Colleen?
I think that an educational campaign is a better idea than the ordinance. Just because the fire hydrant happens to be on your property doesn't mean that it's your specific responsibility. I mean, anybody in the neighborhood there could come shovel out that hydrant. So I would prefer, I know Mike Tryland did kind of a cute little video of one fireman talking while two other firemen with a clock running are digging out a fire hydrant from a pretty good snowfall. So maybe a couple of educational things on social media, but not in favor of an ordinance.
Kim?
I would say that my past house, I did not have a whole lot of spots to put snow. They also had a driveway, and I actually thought it was an ordinance already. So I took that on as something to shovel. But I will also add, I had a lot of sidewalk, and there is one instance where I was cited for not clearing the sidewalk when, in fact, as I was lucky that I knew the ordinance, and I think I had 24 hours, and they cited me at, say, 18 hours. So I was able to get out of it, but I would personally be in favor of an ordinance, but I would suggest that maybe we give it a little bit more time than the 24 hours to clear out, say, the hydrant. And I personally feel that if you're moving next to an hydrant, that you should take that on as your responsibility. But I also know neighbors have come down and helped clear out other hydrants just because they do get packed up for shoveling. That's my opinion.
Abby? Abby?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to share, I guess, my own personal experience where I live is there's a hydrant across the street from me, and I guess one of the advantages of being a village trustee is I already saw like the social media posts about, you know, make sure you clear, I think it was like at least two feet around all sides of the hydrant. And my neighbor wasn't doing it, and I was kind of already appreciative of them having, they're the side of the street that has the sidewalk, and they do a great job taking care of that, and I actually don't mind shoveling. So I was taking care of the hydrant, but I did notice like driving around my neighborhood, there was like inconsistent clearing out of hydrants, and that's why I was kind of interested in Ann's proposal that came here last time about, you know, requiring property owners to shovel around the fire hydrants. Not so much because I'm interested in like, you know, citing anyone, that's not pleasurable, of course, but I think it is very much a safety concern if there is a fire and that firefighters have to spend time to clear out that hydrant before even, you know, getting water out. And I think there, I mean, I don't know how often or how much each year, but there is, there does seem to be a public information campaign already. I've seen at least a couple times, you know, the PSA about, at least on social media, about clearing out the hydrants. And I was also kind of wondering, you know, it might be helpful to get insight from public safety staff, well, I guess I should say the fire district, and maybe as well as the Public Safety Committee to see, you know, where they're at with that, to kind of get their advice as well because they're obviously very knowledgeable in that area. And also wondering from them and staff, like, what are the pros and cons of if we do enact this? But I am interested, but I'm not like dead set for it, but I think there definitely needs to be clearer guidance around that, and I'd like to get more people's input.
Okay. One of my concerns is our seniors who are in their homes already have enough difficulty staying in their homes, and an ordinance requiring people to shovel out or pay for someone to shovel out their, that area for them around the fire hydrant, I think may be an additional burden that is difficult for them and one more nail in the coffin of moving out of their homes. So for that reason, I would be concerned about it. I also, we have a hydrant between my house and the neighbor's house. I'm not really sure who would be responsible between us to shovel it out, but I'm always impressed that Don Tierney's daughter comes across the street and shovels that hydrant every single, every single time it snows. But, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to have an ordinance that said we really have to. I go for the education campaign. Abby, or Tishida?
Yes. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So I really like all the questions and the bullet points that were brought up. I think that's great data to receive, and I too, I like education. And I think before you can do an ordinance, you need to educate first to give people an opportunity to be compliant. You know, you've heard different people say they didn't even know it was an ordinance, or they thought it was one already, so that, and granted, that's not a lot of data to make this assumption, but it just seems like there's a disconnect, and I would fully support, you know, getting some education out there and just really giving people the opportunity to step up before we create ordinances, and then we have to figure out how are we going to enforce them, and what's the repercussion if it isn't done. And so I'd like to take the path of let's educate our community members and give them an opportunity to self-monitor, right? Especially when more people know what ought to be done, you have more people encouraging those who aren't to do it. And Jane, I really like your point about putting undue burden on individuals that are underserved, that they already are taxed at different responsibilities that they already have, and then adding something else. That could be a little bit much as well, so I would fully support educating first and then circling the wagons if we need an ordinance, then going down that route, but I would like to educate first.
There any other, Abby?
I just wanted to add that if we go, it sounds like we're, a lot of people are leaning towards more of a public information campaign standpoint. I would just ask or request that can we, can it be a little bit more multifaceted, like saying that it's the neighborhood or community responsibility? Like, obviously, if the person lives there and there's a fire hydrant and they noticed to clear it out, like, and they can do that, like, go ahead. But like you said, you know, we have older residents, and I think a lot of people in the community already do that, like, look out for one another, but like, say, this is part of that, you know, the hydrants are so important for everyone with their public safety, and it's in everyone's best interest that they're cleared out, and, you know, it's also nice to help out a neighbor. Like, technically, a hydrant might be in their property or whatever, but, you know, help them out clearing it out, you know, that kind of thing. If it could, if it could kind of have that, you know, perspective on that, that like, want to help one another out and how important the fire hydrants are to our community.
Good point. Bill? Bill, you're muted. Still can't hear you, Bill. All right. All right, we'll keep moving, and Bill will figure out his sound system. It sounds to me like we're looking at some sort of an information campaign, so, or an education campaign through social media and other methods. If that's your preference, can I again see, just to show a thumbs? Okay. All right, does that give staff what they need, or do we need to take any other action?
I can chime in that we, it is something that staff already does. I know Stacy has a, Stacy and Corey have a program by which they're, put those public service announcements out for clearing fire hydrants, so they'll continue to do that.
Okay. All right, Rebecca?
If they already have stuff in existence for educating, is, where can we find that so that we can share that with, with folks as trustees? Through like our social medias?
Don, it'll be on our social media, like, if you go back through the history, you can probably find it for those photos, and then you could reshare them when the snow starts to fly again. Well, I'm sure that's when they start to put those posts out about clearing fire hydrants and whatnot, starting November.
Are you talking about? Are you talking about on the website, or are you talking about on like the Facebook web?
Well done, Rebecca. Corey's on, she's our guru. Corey?
Hi, yeah, so if you go out to our page right now, you'll probably have to do a lot of searching to find anything on snow removal boat around fire hydrants, just because it's spent some time. So we'll definitely ramp up those efforts again when the season hits. So social media, Village has a Facebook page, definitely encourage sharing posts on there. We have an account on Nextdoor that we post on. We also send out email and text notifications, so encouraging residents to sign up for those notifications. We are constantly putting reminders in there about all of the winter weather reminders, so.
Thank you. Jim?
I'm just wondering if we can put this like on an agenda, like in January or February, so we can actually see how the social campaign is going, if we need to do an ordinance at that time.
Sure. All right. If not, we will, we don't want to think about snow much right now, so let's, let's move on to 5.3. All right. This is a concept plan for 14-acre parcel in Savannah Brooks, which is considering a change in land use. I just want to open this up before the developers, the Tierneys, make a presentation. When Savannah Brooks was conceived, times were different back in the early 2000s, maybe even before then. There was different housing needs, there were different retail and commercial needs and demand. There was different community characteristics, and many of the plans that were made reflected the times in which they were made. A lot of what was planned for Savannah Brooks has been successful and has come to fruition. However, there's some pieces of it that have not been developed, in part because of the changes over time in community demand, housing demand, business development changes. And so the developers have put together a strategy to complete the development of Savannah Brooks. And tonight, they're going to put that in front of you for discussion and to alert you to their, to their plan. The plan not only provides for some additional residential, but also for some commercial and some incentives for commercial and some park space. So just to orient people, whom I think everyone knows, I don't know if you do, Rebecca, but Savannah Brooks is bordered by Highway 51 and Highway 19. It has Mariter Clinic up in the corner on the, let me see if I got this right. It would be the northwest side of the development. And the piece of land we're going to be talking about tonight, where the pieces are across the top, the blue 14 acres, and then the green and the pink kind of next to it. So with that, I will turn it over to, I believe it's Jerry who's going to go first, or am I wrong? Jerry, are you there?
Yes, I'm going to try to get the, Don's here with me.
Does everyone know Jerry and Don Tierney, they are the developers for Savannah Brooks? So, take it away, gentlemen.
Yes, Don Tierney here. Looking at the map that's in front of me, the map that you're looking at, the 14 acres would be the blue area. If you look at the traffic circle, it would be to the right. In other words, it would be the northeast going up to Highway 19. Now, the green area that we were looking at, putting together a program to use that as a, the Forest Park, is actually, I can't see that on the map, it would be east of, right along Highway 19. We're not coming in to change anything where the cursor is right now. That will be commercial property, that corner. But let's go to the east with the cursor along Highway 19. Go to your, to my right as I'm looking at it.
Jerry, would you rather have us go to your, to your slides?
If you could bring that, yeah, let's do that. Let's, that, I'm really glad you got the blue one, though, because when you look at mine, it's all filled out. So the blue one was very helpful, but let's go to the first slide, the one that shows my plan there, if we could.
And I think Luann is.
I don't have that. I just had the map I showed that I just had up.
Oh, it's in the packet, Lou. I'm sorry, it's for this.
Oh, I'll grab it. I apologize. Hold on. Here we go. This one?
Yes, perfect, thank you. So if you look at the, where it says proposed Village of DeForest Park, that's the board property. Actually, there's a, there's a one-rod wide, it's, I believe, 16 and a half feet, where the folks can go down to what used to be the carp ponds. It would be Dane County lands, but we actually purchased the dark green. And looking at the entire situation, what I want to do is to give some good deals on the commercial property, have lots where we can put in a combination of twin homes, duplex condos, where the integrity is held up, but you can get to a better price point. And so we'll go back to this with a park, but the park is the 5.3 acres on the right side as I'm looking at it. So in my pictures, Luann, I've got some along Savannah Village in Wanakee, and also down where the Park Apartments are, there you go. That shows a berm in this picture, and that is along State Highway 113. And go ahead and go to the next one. That picture was taken into forest. They have a beautiful kind of a clubhouse in the Park Apartments in this same development. And if you look straight ahead, a little bit to your left, you'll see the big berm where it really hides the highway. That's US Highway 51. And so there, it's just kind of an example of how a berm actually, really, there's another one in Savannah Village, and probably go to the next one, so you don't have to look at that guy in the picture. At this one here, you're looking through the homes that's in Savannah, and that was going to be commercial property, but it just didn't develop, it wouldn't sell. And we went back to the Village of Wanakee, put in some, a couple beautiful little cul-de-sacs, and we're able to sell a rather affordable lot, and the homes turned out beautiful. If you look between those two homes, you'll see the trees. Let's go to the next one. Okay, there's a real good picture of a very effective berm. That berm is along Highway 113 where there's a lot of traffic. And living in those homes, you'd hardly know there was a highway behind you. Okay, the next one? That's really the same berm. It does a beautiful job. We own a tree spade, and we always try, we're planting trees all the time. But it's, it's, it really helps. Now, that's a good, hold that picture with the park right there. Talking about this, that is the park we built in Savannah Brooks, right in the center. It has, you're looking at the zip line, you're looking at basically the performer dome. You can see the tennis court, basketball court behind that. To your right, there's a sandbox. And a matter of fact, if you look at the rocks, you see those rocks right in the front. We came across those, geologically, it's a quarry stone, but it actually makes a perfect circle. It's like a little pool, and in the center, it's hollowed out, and the kids in the sandbox, they take their little things, they put sand in there. It's kind of cool. So we do have a beautiful park in Savannah Brooks right in the center. So then, what we want to do is put a vest pocket park. In other words, a place where you'd have a grill, a gas grill, where you have more retired people, younger families, where you can come in and do some cook, cooking and so forth, and just have a gathering place. Let's go to the next slide. This picture is taken at the Laurel Apartments in Kilkenny, and it shows a real good way for cooking is actually kind of a neat, where you have a grill or you have a gas grill where people can just sit under an open shelter. Let's go to the next one. This was taken into forest in the Park Apartments, very popular. Instead of going to, you know, you bring in the charcoal and get the old thing going, just have a nice grass, a gas grill. And they're really used a lot with a little kind of a staging on each side of it. And if you notice, again, you have the berm in the back protecting it from US Highway 51. Next. This is what I call the Beer Garden. It reminds me of the little green part, if you look in this proposal we have, right in the center where JFK Street would be extended in a hillside, which would be in the berm. We did this, we called it, I don't, for some reason, I just call it a beer garden, meaning you could maybe take a glass of wine or a glass of beer or something, go meet your neighbor. There really isn't any performer domes, there's not a lot of equipment, swing sets and that kind of stuff. Maybe you put a sandbox in there, but it's a place where people actually can just kind of gather and have a good time. And that's, that was the intention of having that little park in this proposed 14 acres, so the folks from all over the neighborhood could, could come up there and just get to meet people. Next. There's another picture where we have a fire pit, that's in the little deal in Wanakee and Kilkenny. It's, it's just a nice place where people don't have to go and drive someplace. They can actually walk down the street and just kind of get to know their neighbor. So I go next. This is a picture taken down in Savannah Village where we mixed single-family homes with duplexes. And it was kind of what I call, you know, I could sit here and tell you, folks, I'm a big-time smart planner, but if you ever heard of the word serendipity, sometimes you do something and it turns out amazing by accident. And what happened was the duplex condo market totally tanked in about 2005, and it was, it was because of the financing, and it was just a weird time in history. And we went back to the Village of Wanakee, put some single-family homes in there, and we realized it's, even though we did it kind of by accident, it's an amazing concept. And if you get a chance, if you go where El Chero's is in Wanakee, the Fortified Bank, you drive down, you can drive through there, and it's like, you don't even realize it's duplex, it's condos, or it's single-family. It's a tremendous example that just kind of happened by accident, and it turned out to be one of the best things we've ever done. And it also brings in a more of affordable price point for homes. And with the high price of lumber and all the funny things and the pricing thing today, it's, it's our opportunity to have a place for the builders to have beautiful homes, but they don't have to be as large. There's a lot of places where there's the four-bedroom homes, the families, the kids are gone, but the people, the folks that own them, with the price of. But the Pete, the folks that own them, with the price of new construction, they're not selling these four-bedroom ops, even though the kids are gone. They need a place where the lots can be more affordable. And by going to the duplex condo, along with the smaller single-family, it gets a knife, a nice product. And it's, it's got the livability because of the way this community is designed. And by putting berms along US Highway nineteen, coming in Williamsburg, we'd have that same kind of a peaceful feeling. And that way, it just makes a great community. Um, I think one, the next, uh, go to the next slide. Yeah, there's, that's a picture of a duplex condo. And you notice some are not as large as the homes, but when you drive by, they all look beautiful. But the big thing here would be, when I thought about this land we purchased, we would give, we would work out something where that would be a park, where the whole community could go and, and enjoy it. And at the same time, this would give the housing that we have there, it would give it a much nicer feel. In other words, everybody'd know that this is a community versus wondering if you have a commercial lot, you always wonder what's gonna happen with that empty lot is. And the other thing I wanna mention, we have a lot of commercial property, um, just across the street. And then all the way up to Mariter. And, uh, we have, in other words, plenty of property. We can do a good job and try to work with companies to, to get them started. So, that's, that's, uh, that's kinda what it looks like.
Can I, can I jump in for a minute and just clarify what I think you're saying to us and what you've told me before? Does that work, Jerry or Don?
Yep, absolutely.
All right, so when you, when you approached us, what I, put, will you put the map back?
I apologize.
Thanks. The, the top fourteen acres, which was blue on the, on the first map that we showed you, originally was slated to be commercial property. And, and it has sat, sat vacant for a long time. That property also has impacted the ability, from what Don has told us, to sell the lots surrounding it because people don't know what is going to be in that commercial area. What, what he is proposing is that that become residential and that the lots be developed such that they are maybe a bit smaller. It would be a multi and single-family combination. And that the goal would be to have reasonably priced homes in that area. I additionally think I hear you saying that what is green and pink going up to Mariter would remain commercial. Um, and that you would have some resources to incentivize people to, to, to bring commercial or retail operations into that space. The, the residential area and, and that additional green and pink has not been producing any tax revenue or any, any revenue because he's not been able to attract people for, you know, fifteen years or so. I don't know how long, it's been a long time. So your goal is to try and make this productive and complete. Is that accurate?
Yes, yes, it's very accurate. And the other thing is, we, we also, we own the Fleet Farm property. That's a lot of commercial area. Right across the street from us is the Hooper property. Uh, there's a lot of tremendous amount of commercial property. And we, we've really been hanging on to this, these empty lots for, I don't know, fourteen, fifteen years. And by putting this, making this change, and then also taking that land that we purchased to the right, the green map, uh, you, we could have a nice trail coming out from the traffic circle, coming out towards Highway nineteen. And there'd be a way that everybody there could get to that green park. And it's, I just think it's, it's another amenity. We've done stuff like this in the past. And it's, it kinda, it's kinda what makes a community amazing place to live. And I, I'm just trying to look at every way of making this a better community.
And, and we appreciate that. The other piece that I understood to say is, in addition to the little park that is right up John F. Kennedy Drive, you're offering to, um, give to the community the, the, the park, the five point three acres, um, as a, as a park nature conservancy piece. So that's all part of the discussion as well.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And just so the board knows, this is, this is committee of the whole, this is not a place where we make decisions. This would still need to go, you know, through P and Z and, and other processes. But, um, Don wanted to get it in front of the board to get general consensus and, and for us to, um, take some positions so that both P and Z and the staff, um, knew where you all wanted to go with this. So, that's what we're here to do tonight. With that, I would ask, um, if there are questions or if staff, Michelle or Brandy or Steve or anyone would like to make comment. Steve?
Yeah, so, uh, Team Tierney, as I call them, um, had come to the development review team, uh, which is consultants and, uh, department heads, basically, and other staff, uh, including public safety. Uh, they came to us about a year ago or so, uh, to consider this. And the staff, we, we have some reservations. I think there's a little bit more information now than there was at that time. But, uh, staff provided maybe some options, uh, including cutting this in half and seeing what the other half does. Uh, the Tierneys came back recently and kinda shared with us with land movement, uh, earth movement, things like that, how it's could be challenging. So, we're kind of in the same position as a development review team, uh, saying nothing's really changed, we're kind of in the same place. So, Board, why don't you share with us what you think? Are you okay with this? Are you not okay? And if you're okay with this, then I guess direct us to continue to look at this as, uh, something you're interested in and then we can look at it differently.
Thank you. All right.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, just a quick question. Uh, still kinda getting up to speed on some of these things. Who actually maintains the neighborhood berms and various amenities? Is there like a association fee that helps to fund that maintenance? Or who's responsible for maintaining all that?
Okay, good question. Um, Don, do you wanna?
Yes, yeah, some, what it is, um, a lot of times the berms, if you get into, uh, communities where we've done this, for example, uh, where the apartments are along Highway fifty-one, uh, the people that buy the clubhouse, they mow up to the base of the, uh, berm. We put trees, it's kind of worked out as a more natural area. Uh, so it really, it doesn't require mowing. We, we get it established good, so you have a good grass cover. And if you get a chance, drive by Highway fifty-one, you'll see it looks very nice. And over by Savannah Village in Wanakee on Highway one thirteen, uh, it's just kind of a natural grass and it's, uh, uh, we work hard so it doesn't turn into weeds. It, it's, and every one we've done, Peaceful Valley Parkway in Wanakee, and again, on DeForest, uh, right on Highway fifty-one here, you drive by, it looks nice and people don't have to mow it.
Uh, so part of, part of that though Rebecca, is that if it's a park that is dedicated to the village, then the village has some responsibility for maintaining that, that park. So, there-
So would those, like the grills and the, and those, the structures or those dedicated by the, the village? Or is that neighborhood specific? Do you understand what I mean?
Absolutely, can I answer that?
Sure.
Okay, um, yeah, if you, if, let's just go to the park we have in, uh, Savannah Brooks. Um, we built it, uh, we did really, a, a really good job. It's easy to maintain, it's a city park, they, they can lease the shelter out. It's available for anyone that wants to rent it from the village. And it's turned over as a village park. Um, the big thing we've, that's what we really do, we specialize in building parks. And we've gotten pretty good at building a park. So it's really maintenance, it's, it's, doesn't take a lot to, to keep it up. It takes something, but it's, it's a tremendous amenity for the entire community. Uh, uh, we, we've never really gotten into parks that are just the private park for this few houses. And, um, it's, it's, it's best if it's for the community, if it's a public park. And if they're built really good, it doesn't take a lot to maintain them.
Thank you, that was great information, I appreciate that.
Other questions, comments? Bill?
Yeah, is this, uh, gonna use TIF funds?
No. Uh, basically, um, it's, when we get into the, um, to the, to the, uh, the public, the streets, TIF funds are primarily based where there's commercial. There's a gray line between the Savannah, uh, with, from the traffic circle, um, where it, it actually brings traffic out from the commercial area. But all our streets that were built in Savannah Brooks or any other place there's a TIF, uh, those residential streets are not, there's, there's, there's not TIF money used to build the residential streets in, in front of the homes.
Okay, and then, uh, that five-plus acres of land that we annexed last year, um, I was kinda confused as to how you were gonna plan on building over there anyways. It's kind of, uh, it's kind of low. But, uh, this seems like a better plan. And it, it would probably make a nice park. And thanks for, for doing that instead of building along that sensitive area. Um, I, I support that. But, uh, I'm pretty much accept the fact that commercial is kind of an iffy proposition there. And I would go for duplexes condo type of thing. And the berm, I mean, the berm's gonna be there and that's, if you wanna live on nineteen, uh, like over by where Hooper is, they've got a berm and, and Hooper's on one side and condos on the other and the condos are sold out. So, I don't see a problem with that. So, and I'm pretty much supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Abby?
Yeah, I, I, I'm very much interested in, you know, if, if that land hasn't really been seeing much activity with, with commercial development. Uh, I think that's a good route to go. I appreciate the approach of kinda having a mix of different kinds of housing there. Um, I've kinda noticed in like the older parts of DeForest when, when there's different kinds of housing and you can't quite tell what is what, i- it seems like i- it, the neighborhood gels better and there's not such a stark contrast, like, oh, this is the neighborhood where there's duplexes and this is the neighborhood where there's apartments. It's like, seems to work best when it's, when it's kinda all mixed together and there's more of a community feel. Um, and I am also definitely interested in the, the small lot option to bring down the, the, uh, housing prices for people that wanna own a home, but maybe don't necessarily need or want a larger lot. And, and that can bring down the price to make it more affordable for them. And, uh, definitely interested in that land to the east that you mentioned dedicating. I just wondered, I was looking at Google Maps and it says that, I, I don't know if that's part of the land that you're talking about, but it says there's like a John Gate Trail. And I don't know what that is, I didn't know that was there. If that's part of that land that you're talking about? And, and if it is, how that would work? I don't know if that's a county trail or what, but-
Yeah, if you went back to the, to the green map-
Well, timeout, I'm, when you look at that access Dane, for some reason, I, I believe that is mislabeled. Okay, the real John Galt Trail is that little loop that goes from one thirty-four to one thirty-eight. That's what that is. It's a, it's like a one-way.
And then if, if you look at the green area, the, the five point three acre park, which we want to turn into a park, the county has a one-rod wide, I believe that's sixteen and a half feet, so they can access their Dane County Park. You'll see, uh, there's a little kind of a-
The dash line.
The dash line, that's sixteen and a half, I believe it's sixteen and a half feet wide. It's a, it's a, yeah. But I, I'm thinking that if we could take, and when you come, uh, back up to nineteen on Savannah Parkway where it swoops up and curves up and hits nineteen, it'd be neat to have a trail somehow in the back of the lots, um, on the back, on the Highway nineteen side of the berm. So everybody in this community could actually bicycle or walk down to that public park and, and get to it. It would be very accessible, um, from the, from the community.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, thank you, Don. I too, I'm very supportive of your proposal. Um, I just wanted to make a couple comments and you sorta started talking about what I was thinking about, how it looks like, how there's a, pretty much a driveway, at least I'm looking at DCI map that runs along your property line there or the property that, that sixteen and a half or one-rod easement. I would personally be interested if there is a way that we could get an easement sort of through the subdivision, so it'd be easier for your community to access that trail. Um, and I would mention this, I can understand that why you wouldn't wanna do this, but the park that you're proposing up between the lots eight and nine, if you wanted to move that, say where the John Gates Trail, the actual road is to connect, say, your sort of a beer garden type park to that natural area. I mean, that's one concept. But again, I also understand why you'd wanna have that in the denser area, so. But again, for myself, I would, I would love to see some sort of trail connection to that five point three acres coming off of probably John Gill Trail or Hanover Drive, maybe like say between thirteen and fourteen. Does that make sense what I'm talking about at least?
Yes, and I, there's a, a major, uh, trail that comes along Williamsburg. You know where the traffic circle is? That's the big one, it comes all the way down to the other entrance of Dane County Park.
Yep, yeah.
With the circle.
You're that big forested property.
Yes, yes, so if, I, I agree, we, we do wanna put a trail. I'm just thinking those lots are pretty big by the highway. Those three, if we could have a nice ten-foot trail that would be very inviting for people that are on bicycles. I mean, even people that are coming up from the other park entrance could come right up Williamsburg, come up Savannah Parkway. And if there was a nice, we, we run into some issues where we try to squeeze a little trail or a sidewalk between houses. But our experience is that if you can put a nice ten-foot trail, that would run parallel to Highway nineteen, it's, it would be inviting for everybody in that entire community to come up and have a nice ten-foot wide trail that would be worked in the berm. Um, because the berm isn't gonna really have to be that tall at that point. Because the highway, it's, 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 we feel it's about a seven or eight foot versus a real tall berm. It's, it should, but I, I, I agree.
I understand you.
Well, somehow, we gotta make a nice connection.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, sounds like we're on the same path. And I do have one other concept or something you think about.
And then, and then Tashidra will be next.
Okay. And I do like the smaller lots and I think, I, I like your idea of mixing duplexes and, and single-family together. I lived in a neighborhood that was very similar, it was two flats more than duplexes, but it was a very unique feel and I liked it a lot. But I'm also looking at your layout. And I see you've got, I'm looking at lots like forty-five through forty-nine and then also like forty-four, forty-three and forty-two. It looks like there's a, a bit of waste there and double-fronting of lots. It looks like there's a, a bit of waste there and double fronting of lots. And I wonder if you've thought about maybe doing a smaller scale, like condo or townhouses there that would maybe utilize that land better and have still the multifamily.
You know, it's very interesting, Jim, as you mentioned that, we went down and looked at a product and it was, I think it's called Terra Vesta. And they had, they had some duplexes that were very narrow, but they were beautiful. And that thinner road, which it could be one-way very easily, it would, it would be a public road. It isn't like some skinny little back alley, but you actually could drive in the garage and then the front of the front porch would be, would have exposure and you'd be, you could sit on your nice front porch and basically the garage would come off the, the thin little road, I, we don't have a name on it yet. But it's exactly what we were thinking. And so really you would have, you'd come in the garage because it's, it's the high side of the, of the ground. So therefore you wouldn't have a steep driveway and then you'd have front windows coming off where it swoops around the corner. And, but, and those are, those lots, if you notice, they're kind of angled. We'd have to make them more rectangle where we could put a two-story, very nice condo that would, that would be in that area from 40, my eyes aren't real good, 47, 46, 45, and then 49 is scheduled to be a duplex condo.
Mm-hmm.
Good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Tashidra?
Yes, I just wanted to say, um, thank you for this presentation and giving us your time tonight to really get us acclimated to that land and, and how you propose to use it. And I would love to see, see this happen. I am definitely in favor of this for three particular reasons. I do like the feel of having affordability. I really want DeForest residents to be able to work here and live here and to be able to afford that. And so I think that that really speaks to the conversations that we've been having over the last couple of months of really wanting to bring not only more businesses, but more individuals that feel like they can work and live at the same place. I do like the idea of land usage, having land sit for 10-plus years really sends a different kind of message to the community and, and the growth and development of the community. So I really appreciate that. I like the blending of the homes and just giving a different variety, a more diverse feel for it and welcoming all different kinds of individuals to the neighborhood and making it affordable once again. And I, one, really, really love the idea of a community feel. I think that feeds back into the mission and vision of DeForest, of being a family and having that family feel and making sure that no matter what part of DeForest you're in, you still feel like home, whether it's the north, the south, the east and the west, and just keeping them all blended. And so that is, those are the particular reasons why I would love to see this happen and I'm in favor of it. So thank you.
Thank you, Tashidra. Bill?
Yeah, there's one last comment on that park, the 5.3. Right now, it's a, a very primitive parking lot. And if we develop it into a park, I'm pretty sure we're gonna have to put a parking lot in there with more improved access off of 19. And that comes at a cost. And that's got to be thought of. And who's gonna pay for that parking lot, improved access? It's just my thoughts and,
Yep.
that's, it's what's gonna, it's what's gonna have to happen. And that is, there is a cost to that.
Well, it's one of the elements that, you know, when we go back to planning and looking at this, we'll have to, we'll have to think through. The other thing that has been brought up in another meeting we were at is the potential to connect the dark green 5.3 acre park with perhaps a trail that goes down to the Ragstead Park. I mean, there could be a lot of different things that could be of interest or maybe applying to the DNR to partner on some of that. So there's a lot of potential options. But am I hearing from folks that generally they'd like to pursue, pursue this concept? Is this thumbs up? All right, it looks pretty unanimous. So hopefully staff will then work with Jerry and Don to, to move this in the next direction. And we appreciate that you took time to come and talk with us. I think it, it helps us to, to see the plans and, and to hear from you. So that was, that was very useful.
Other? Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, everyone. All right, now I have to orient myself to seeing you all, little bigger boxes. With that, it's, it's 5:54, so we'll go through the rest of our agenda. Administration and Finance update, Steve? We lost Steve.
Nothing to share.
Okay. Chief, do you have anything from the Police Department?
Uh, no, not tonight, thank you.
Okay, Public Service update, Judd?
Splash pads come along great, and the garbage, the cardboard pickup at the yard waste site has been a huge hit amongst people. We are, we're working with Waste Management to get a, potentially a larger bin out there.
Great, I've got mine ready to go, that's good. Economic Development update, Michelle?
I was just gonna mention, we've been working on our chapter, Economic Development, chapter of the ConPlan, which will come to you, I believe, at the next meeting with perhaps another, another chapter, but looking forward to discussing that with you next time. That's all.
Thank you. All right, Corey, Community Development, Communications?
Nothing, thank you. Nothing, thank you.
Thanks, okay. Recreation and Community Enrichment, Reese?
Uh, nothing to report tonight.
All right, so with that, do we want to convene into closed session? No, we don't need to?
We're at the regular meeting of the board.
Okay, thank you. All right, Tashidra, do you have your hand up?
No, I do not.
All right. Well, with that then, any other business that we need to address? Bill?
Yeah, since I was muted, just quick about the fire hydrants. I've had a fire hydrant in front of my house for 33 years. I take care of it because my neighbors couldn't or wouldn't. Sometimes it, it got shoveled, sometimes it didn't. I took personal responsibility because my house would burn down, seconds count. But I'm not in favor of inordinance, I think it should be a neighborly thing. I support maybe in the tax bill, a little insert that just reminds people. And you're not, you're never gonna get 100% compliance, but kind of the shame your neighbor type of thing, get it done. Maybe if somebody sees the neighbor out doing it, that it'll get done the next time. But it should be a neighbor thing, it, it, it impacts everybody around that fire, fire hydrant. And I'm not in favor of enforcement at this time, thanks.
Thank you, Bill, sorry you had sound trouble before, so, all right. If there's nothing else, I entertain.
I could say something quick.
Okay, Abby?
Uh, just wanted to share, if, if I, if my screen goes blank or if I leave from it, I, I'm not actually leaving, I just, I have, I've had back pain, so I'm either moving a bit, around a bit, or doing exercises, so just like, you know, and I can hear everything, even if you can't see me on the screen. And the other thing I wanted to say was, last week or the week before, I went to, to the, the, you know, data-driven policing event that the chief invited us to and I really appreciated him sharing information about that and just wanted to say that, so.
Thank you, and I know at some point at one of our meetings, he's gonna make a bit of a presentation just to let us all know about it. So, great, thank you. All right, with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Bill, is there a second?
Rebecca, second.
We have a, a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll see you around the corner at the Village Board Meeting.
Ready to go in at six o'clock.
Thank you. Okay, it's 6:00 PM and I'd like to call the Village Board Meeting to order on Tuesday, May 4th at 6:00 PM. I would ask Lou to note roll call.
Not noted.
And I'd ask Rebecca to lead us in the pledge.
She must be muted.
And Jane, Lou too.
Bill, you want to lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, announcements. The Village Board will convene into closed session pursuant to Section 19.851G of the Wisconsin statutes for purposes of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is, or is likely to become an involved tax assessment litigation Walgreens. Thank you. All right, move to the consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the regular board meeting at 4:20. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Colleen.
Second, Bill.
Hey, hey, Jane.
Yeah.
Those can all, all of the consent agenda items can be taken as one item if you wish. You don't have to pick them individually.
I appreciate that, do we want to take them as one item? Okay. Do you want to redo your motion?
I make a motion to approve items 5, 1, 2, and 3 in the consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve all three. Any discussion, corrections, edits?
A question, which, which things are we approving? I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I'm on the same page.
That's all right, Rebecca, items 5.1, which is the minutes, the approval of resolution celebrating Arbor Day, which is 5.2, and 5.3, which is the approval of special event permit for the library.
Got it, I, I did have just one question for clarification, just for me. I, I, I'm not sure how things have been done in the past, so I apologize. I, I totally support all these things, I just had a question for clarification on the one for the library thing.
Sure.
I'm not sure how to, how this is answered. I'm assuming that the library carries its own insurance, is that correct? Or is, is, are they having to provide extra insurance for this?
Luann?
They have to provide us with a certificate of insurance, which covers us for, should any issues happen with the event. Okay, I just want that clarification. Good deal, that's all I needed, thank you.
All right, any other questions? If not, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, appearances before the board, we have Jason Hanson, who is the judge for DeForest Windsor Municipal Court.
Right, thank you, Madam President. I, I did want to just come in front of the, the board because I either haven't met some of you or I haven't met you in your current roles and I wanted to just give very brief background and describe the court and what we do and, and open things up for any questions there might be. The DeForest and Windsor Municipal Court is a joint municipal court. It's one of about 230 or so community-based justice courts in the state of Wisconsin. By way of background, I'm a former criminal prosecutor and my full-time job for the last 15 years, I've been a court commissioner in Dane County handling a variety of cases. In municipal court here in DeForest, our, our cases involve non-criminal traffic and ordinance violations. So you pass ordinances and it's my job to handle the court proceedings that are designed to enforce those ordinances. They range from things like parking offenses, all the way to first offense operating under the influence. There are the animal violations, juvenile offenses and kind of everything in between. Cases come to the court from both the DeForest Police Department and from the Windsor contract deputies. It's typically about 90% DeForest cases, 10% Windsor, varies from year to year and there's an interjurisdictional agreement, the results in Windsor sharing or contributing the, the costs. I, I have the benefit of being ably assisted by a full-time clerk. Many of you know her, Julie McQ, and two deputy clerks who assist as needed. And one of those is Penny Noble, who also works for the village. When court is regularly in ordinary session, we hold that court in the DeForest Commons, but we're doing that via Zoom right now due to the pandemic, probably something pretty familiar to all of you. As far as, as far as trends go, because people usually want to know these things, what's it looked like the last couple of years? The number of adult cases in 2020 were down only slightly from 2019. That sort of surprised me a little bit, only down about 5%. First quarter of 2021 has us on track to be just above 2019 level, so, but really pretty stable. Not surprisingly, juvenile cases were, were down in 2020. I say not surprisingly because of course the schools weren't operating in, in an ordinary fashion and, and a lot of our juvenile cases come from events occurring within the school environment. But the 2019, I'm sorry, the 2020 numbers were down about half of the 2019 numbers. First quarter of 2021 for juveniles has us on track to be kind of somewhere in between and that kind of makes sense as well. From a collections perspective, the, the penalties generally are meted out in municipal court proceedings, are fines. So we, to some extent, we do measure collections. Down about 8% in 2020 from 2019, first quarter of 2021, right back on track to 2019. So again, pretty stable, given the, the caseload numbers and economic conditions and the like. Now, in terms of other kinds of trends, but the only one I really seen in the last year and I'd be kind of curious to know if the chief feels this way or is, has noted this because I know judges have noted it really across the, the state. One of the things I've seen in municipal court and in my day job in, in Circuit Court is that speeds are way up and, and I'm talking the really high speeds. So I don't know that our number of speeding tickets is necessarily up a lot, but I see a lot of triple-digit kind of speeds on tickets, you know, things that are kind of shockingly fast in a way that I did not see prior to the pandemic. I don't know if that's cabin fever or perception of less enforcement or, or just what it is exactly, but that's, that's one thing I'd know. I don't want to take a bunch of your time, I just wanted to come and say hi at a time when I'm not actually asking for something because it seems like that might be a good thing to do from time to time. And, and again, I, you know, my door is always open and, and you can always shoot me an email or give me a call if you have any question about how things work with the court process or, you know, when we're back to working in, in, I don't want to call it in real life, but in, you know, in the physical DeForest Commons, if, if somebody wants to do a sit-along and, and be present for a court session, you're of course totally welcome to do that as well.
Thank you, thank you. Does anybody have questions for Judge Hanson? We appreciate what you do, Rebecca?
Not a question, I just want to say thank you guys for everything you do. You actually helped me a number of years back with a road rage incident where the person actually got their license taken away, at least temporarily. And you, you guys did an amazing job, so I'm not, I don't know if you were the, the sitting judge at that time, but you guys are much appreciated.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, well, you never know, we may come and sit and watch, but thank you and we look forward to working with you going forward.
Absolutely, thanks again.
Thanks. Judge?
Colleen? Not out for dinner with your wife on your wedding anniversary?
Well, so I, I, I have to go to confession. I scheduled being on this agenda before I realized it was my 25th anniversary. And I finally, yeah, it was not a good move, but then when I finally had the guts to come clean on it, she said, oh, that's okay, I'm scheduled to work anyway. So, so it worked out. So, so it worked out.
You'll pay for it anyway, that's the way it works, so.
Well, I am in the accountability business.
Great, all right.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. The next appearance that we have is John Maley. John, will you introduce yourself and, and your address? And John is here to talk about water sewer charges.
Hello, I'm John Maley and my wife Jenny Maley is also attending. We live at 810 Yorktown Road here in DeForest and we have a huge problem along with many other residents in DeForest on the water sewage charges that we get monthly, especially during the summertime for watering our yards. We have a irrigation system at our property here that has a one-inch dedicated line to it that we are looking to either have a water deduct meter installed or a separate water meter for that dedicated line just for the irrigation system.
So, can you give us a little, a little more information?
As in bill-wise or?
Yeah.
Right now, on a normal monthly basis, our water bill and our sewer bill matches each other. So during the summertime, our water bill can easily be between $3 and $450 during the summertime months because of that sewer charge that we're being ta, put on our bill just to water the grass.
Wow.
Right.
So, so this is Jenny Maley, I'm here with John. So basically, we're getting charged the sewer usage for the water. And then, as you know, the water also goes back to the Madison Metro Water Sewage to like filter it and clean it. So we're also getting charged for that. So our water usage is only $36 this last month and our, our sewer charge and cleaning fees are actually just about that or more. So we're just trying to figure out what we can do to help eliminate that cost of having a $450 water bill during the summer to make our lawn and our house look nice.
That's a huge, huge lot of watering. Questions from Bill?
Yeah, how much water do you use a month in the summer?
That I know.
Over, over normal.
Normally, we probably use about 10,000. It says, it says that we, our last bill was 12,500 and that bill was only $145. So I imagine double that, if not at least double and a half that.
Okay, because I was looking up deduct meters and Monroe's got a policy. Of course, they don't have to deal with Madison Metropolitan, which is a third of the bill, really. But they have a program with permits and meters. It's about $423, give or take. The needed to break even with the permit fee is 10,000 gallons. Water usage needed to recoup initial expenses, 93,000, you know, to recoup your $423.
Right.
And I don't have a problem with the deduct meters. It's just the fees that we cannot be reimbursed from Madison Metropolitan Sewage District. And that can be an, an expense to the rest of the village residents. I would like to be able to see that them not charging us for that, but I don't think that's possible. Do you have any other people in Dane County that use Metropolitan Sewer District that have an exemption or?
No, I mean, just a lot of the municipalities around here already allow the deduct meter. And when I told my irrigation company that DeForest does not, they were actually shocked that DeForest does not allow a deduct meter. You know, Madison allows it, Verona allows it, Pittsburgh allows it.
Yeah, the only problem is, is you and 100 other people and then there's a Madison Metropolitan Sewage District fee that everybody has to pay.
Right.
That's the only sticking point for me is I'd like to have that too, but, you know. On 10,000 gallons, it costs about $90, correct?
For the, the fees?
For 12,000.
For 10,000 gallons of water? It comes out to about?
For the sewer usage? Yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. Because my bill's about 70. It might kick up to 84 in the summer. I have a large half-acre lot. I don't have irrigation system. In fact, I have a cistern. It takes rainwater and stores it. But that's neither nor, or it, it's just, I'm, I'm for it, but just that Metropolitan Sewage District charge that the rest of the residents would have to pay for. And they just recently took a big sewage increase. I'm with you though, but maybe we need to study this a little farther and see what other communities do, what they charge and get a better, yeah.
That's, that sounds like a good idea, Bill. Judd, do you have anything you want to add to this discussion?
Not right now. I mean, so if the deduct meter is not the way to go, why can't a dedicated water meter be put on that line going just for the irrigation?
John, what I was asking was Judd Blau, our Public Works Director, to comment.
Gotcha.
Sure. So I've looked into, done a little bit of research on this and we'll have, it's on the agenda to discuss this further under 8-1, right? And get forward direction if we want to move forward with this or not. But I have looked into, there, there are communities that do offer it. There are some in Dane County that offer it. There's one in the community that, in Dane County that used to offer it that five years ago rescinded their policy and no longer allowed deduct meters at all. Only those that have them were grandfathered in. So there's options, there's ways to do it. There's, I've seen it in all different aspects from, there's communities that have meters that they lend out. So you come and rent that meter at the start of the season and you return it at the end of the season and they, they calculate your costs backwards from there to all the way to where we have, you put the meter, it's got to be inside because it's there year-round and it's, can be inspected at any time. And there's the costs associated with that for the homeowner to put that in, but then it just basically deducts their cost of the water that's used for that purpose of whatever they're using it for, right? So their outside spigots are lined up off of their regular water supply into their own line that then feed for, if they have a dedicated irrigation line or if they're using just their spigots for watering their yards or filling pools, they can use that deduct meter to help offset those costs. What Trustee Langrath touched on though is our costs are the same from Madison Metropolitan Sewers District every year or every, you know, whatever they charge us. It's just amortized and shared back across all the users of the, of the community. So any, if whoever puts deduct meters in, those costs are just getting pushed around to everybody. So if everybody put a deduct meter into their home, you wouldn't see much relief on the MMSD side of your, of your bill, so.
Oh, we're, we kind of moved right into 8.1, so I apologize for that. We will, we'll continue with that. Judd, you, do you have other things to offer? Otherwise, you know, I might suggest to the board that we have Bill's new infrastructure group and Judd continue to explore this and look at, you know, options and, and bring it back to us for review. Rebecca?
Yeah, I actually was, since we're kind of discussing it already, I did have questions related to these deduct meters. I know a number of people that I've talked to are very much in favor of these. I'm just learning about these and they're quite interesting. But I was, I was wondering if, if these did get approved, would these be mandatory or voluntary? Who, who bears the cost of the installation? Who, I mean, who makes sure that they're being used properly? And then also, I had a question, I know because you were talking about the pools, because that doesn't necessarily automatically go into the sewers. Well, what happens to that water when they drain it? And what about the chemicals? Where does that water go? Where are they draining it into?
Absolutely.
Sounds like a lot of good questions, Judd.
I would, yes, there's, everywhere that it's a request for if a homeowner wants to have the deduct meter, one of the things we'd have to figure out is what that time allocation is for our staff to do this. If there's a, an overwhelming amount of people who want to have this happen, I've had two people request it. John Maley reached out to me, he and I chatted two, three weeks ago, I guess it was. And I had one other resident reach out previously. I know when I was on the board previously, on the rare occasion, we'd get a request for this. But at the time, it was, it was a lot more work for staff. So we have to, you know, from, from our side, it's, it's not a simple equation, right? Because we have to first figure out how do we want to do this? What are the implications? And what's the break-even point for a resident who wants to do this? Then we have to figure out our billing scenarios, work with Penny, and she's got to come up with new ways in which these deduct meters are incorporated in and how do they get subtracted out at the appropriate time? What sort of inspection records are required? Do we want backflow preventers put on, required as part of this? If we need to inspect, you know, how do we enforce if there is, you know, so somebody decides they want to use their deduct meter and then take a nice three-hour shower in their house, but not have it being charged back? How do we know that that's not what's happening? So we have to have inspections and all these other components to put in place to make sure that it's being used appropriately.
Abby?
Sorry, it took me a second to unmute it. I, I have, I, I thank you, John, for coming and speaking. I really appreciate when residents come and bring their concerns because that's the best way we can, you know, address it or, or at least look into the issue is, is if you come and speak directly to us. I appreciate that. Yeah, I haven't heard too much concerns or interest in this issue. And I do have a lot of concerns around it, basically, you know, paraphrasing what, what judges said. But that said, you know, I, I'm not interested in automatically saying no to it either. I, I think that would probably be good for the infrastructure to, committee to look into. My biggest thing is that I, I don't want any of the costs being spread to, you know, all the, all the MMSD customers. I don't think that's fair. And if there's a way to do it where that's not done. And then also, you know, like Judd said, the amount of staff time that would be involved as well. Because I honestly don't know if there would be that many people doing that and we have to be very focused on, you know, providing services to the vast majority of the, or to the, to the whole community. And we, we don't want to do certain things that might detract from that too much. But I am interested in learning more, so.
Thank you, Abby.
I would say that I am also interested in learning more about the deduct meter and I'm more in favor of it. Have a little bit of a question, say like, right now, I've got a water meter. I don't know exactly how it was installed because it came in with my house. I know it's been upgraded to the newer system, but I don't know if it's the village that is doing, say, that upgrading or if it's a plumber. And why I mention that is I think another option would be is the, I don't want any of the costs associated with the deduct meter, installing a second meter being borne by the village. That should be, to me, as a resident.
Correct.
So I want to make sure that that happens. And that's why maybe question, Judd, is how does the meters get installed? Could we just require a plumber to install these things for us?
We would, I would, oh, it's, that's up for debate, right? Discussion?
Yeah.
If we get, get down to that part, our inclination in the public services side is that we would want to install the meter itself. So the, they would have their plumber get it all prepared. So the piping is run and then we show up, install the meter because there's more than likely going to have to be an additional transponder put in, depending upon where they are in the community, you know, so where the Maleys are is not as much of a concern. But when you get down south, some of our transponders, we have to run wiring a long way to get it out so it can send the, those readings back to Village Hall. So there's, you know, transponder fees associated with that, that we have to install and place those in. So there would be a, a mix of that and then we would probably come up with a cost associated with the time of our public service cries, the water guys going out and, and putting in these meters.
And thank you, Judd. And the other thing I'd add, I'm not as concerned, say, with enforcement because to me, right now, there's no reason. Well, there is reason, but I could tap in ahead of my water meter and be stealing water right now. And I mean, it's stealing until somebody catches me. But, you know, I mean, so as long as, like Judd said, the plumber comes in and has everything set up, when we hook up the meter, we're going to know that it's set up right. And if somebody taps in a shower line on the deduct meter, that's stealing and at some point, hopefully, they get caught. And you should do that and hopefully, like, to believe everybody is honest.
Yeah, we have no problems paying for the water. We just don't want to have to pay the sewer cost when it's not getting filtered. You know, there's no need for it, so.
And I agree with that concept too.
All right, other board members, comments, questions? Otherwise, it sounds like the, what we're recommending is that we go to the drawing board and review this and come back with a proposal at a later time.
Okay.
Is that accurate? Okay, thanks, guys. All right, Judd, did you get what you needed?
Yep, I'll begin to formulate some plans. I have talked to Wisconsin Rural Water Association and having their help in finding some municipalities near us that do this and look at their ordinances and how they implement this in their community. And we'll come back to it and bring it forward to the board at a future date.
Thank you. All right, and thank you, Bill, for the research you did. Appreciate that. All right, 9.1. I just got to check and make sure I didn't skip something. Ordinance 2021-009, it ordinance amending the DeForest Shoreline Zoning Regulation, Chapter 25, and providing for reimbursement of village consultant costs for development reviews. Randy?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. How's everybody? Um, so everything was broken down in the memo. This was brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission back in December for a public hearing. Planning and Zoning Commission had a lot of input and several comments on it. So we took. So we took it back and Mark diligently did a lot of research, um, and digging deep and revised it to, the ordinance that you have before you. I did include the red line version of the ordinance, which included all the comments based off of the P and Z, uh, discussion on this statutory requirements, um, that we implement, uh, the shoreline. Those updates to our shoreline, uh, zoning ordinance. And then real quick, and also just include some tweaks to toughen up our reimbursement agreement for consultant costs. Uh, when we work with, um, different developers and things of that sort. So really brief, um, if you have any questions, feel free to holler.
It's a lot of dense information, so if people have questions, let's, let's spend some time. Rebecca?
I, I, I would say ninety nine point nine nine percent of this, I had zero problem with. I think it's, it, it all looked good. I had a point of clarification that because I could not find this in the language. At what point is a non-conforming structure that is currently exempt or grandfathered in, required to conform to this ordinance? So where in the language is that information? So for example, say, the, the property owner and, and a structure needs to be replaced. Does it then have to conform? Or can they put it back in the exact same place? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Absolutely. And it's a great question. The non-conforming structure, um, it's not addressed in the shoreline zoning as to what that is. That's actually addressed in the zoning ordinance. So in the zoning ordinance, it lists the definition of a non-conforming structure and then all the particulars that would, um, happen. So say, you know, active, you know, nature or something takes all of it out. It dictates whether, you know, it can be replaced as is, um, you know, or if they're, you know, repairing it. Maybe they have to, only can repair fifty percent, things like that. But the zoning ordinance does address what the non-conforming structures are and the regulations for those.
Okay, good, because I was really concerned a little bit about ambiguity.
Sure.
Because we know what happens when something is ambiguous. It's not.
Understood. Thanks for asking.
Bill, you had a question?
Yeah, um, I was, I was at the December, uh, P and Z meeting. They had a public hearing, which is referencing in this, uh, inner packet. And nobody shows up. And that was kind of sad. Um, and it also mentions there's fourteen Sunnybrook, residents affected and two in River Oaks, I believe. I'm just, I was just wondering, did you get any comments from them of any kind? Any pros, cons?
No, there weren't any public comments received on anything from the proposal.
Okay.
For the ordinance.
And then I wasn't able to, uh, attend the P and Z meeting last week. I was deep in the mountains of Colorado without internet access for a week.
Ah, shucks.
Was kind, it was kind of a withdrawal, but the scenery, the scenery made up for it. There's talk about, you know, the vegetative buffer.
Yes.
In your red line, you state there was some criticism or whatever. And without minutes, um, is there any way of reflecting on what was said? Versus the vegetative buffer, pros and cons? Because, because is that, it's my understanding the state doesn't require that, correct?
Correct. Dane County does require some vegetative buffer, I think. But I'm going to have to defer to Al because it's getting into a little more deep legal side of it that I'm not familiar with.
And Jim may, Jim may have a response to.
Yeah, Jim.
I was going to say, Bill, we did not end up reaching out to those Sunnybrook residents and the other people that, say were affected in December. Because the direction of the Planning and Zoning Commission is that we didn't want to affect anybody that was not previously affected. So Mark recrafted it and that's what's in front of us today or tonight is, a revision that does not affect them. It actually relaxes some of the restrictions on them. So that was why they weren't reached out to. And as far as the buffers, I think what is in place in this ordinance is the buffers of Dane County is still on the ones that were annexed after whatever year it was.
Nineteen eighty-two.
Nineteen eighty-two.
Yep, and everything that was annexed prior to nineteen eighty-two is pretty much exempt, is my understanding.
Yeah.
So we're trying to sort of minimize the, the facts of the Dane County ordinances and of the recent past.
So is there any need for a vegetative buffer in the, in the ordinance? Since the state doesn't, si- since the state doesn't require it and we're not going to be under Dane County. I'd rather not see that in there. I accept the fifty feet, that's, that's a lot better than what Dane County has and remaining the state standards. But if, if the state doesn't require it, I don't see any need for the vegetative buffer to be in there.
Yeah, I would ask for Al to comment, but I think it's still in place from the Dane County for everything after that annexation.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's been a long time since I looked at this when we first put the ordinance together. And frankly, there's a complicated interplay between the state statutes, county regulation. You know, the minimum state standards versus the, uh, the optional standards. And I, I just don't feel comfortable trying to answer that question as I sit here right now. I could certainly get you an answer to it though.
Okay, then, and that, that's, that's the main thing is, do we need to have something? And if we don't, I don't see any need to have it. It's just another encumbrance on, uh, the residents.
I thought Mark Crawford's indicated that we were required to follow the Dane County or to be under the Dane County offer. But I could be wrong about that.
And, and my interpretation is we don't have to. Because we're not under Dane County. The state is requiring the villages and cities to have their own, standards. But I could be wrong, I, I'm just trying to read all that. And then the reference to lands before twenty fifteen or after twenty fifteen, they have to be maintained. It's just a lot of ambu- ambu- ambiguity. Uh, say you have a bunch of trees and scrub, between you and the river, and you start cleaning out the scrub and you get into trouble. I mean, your neighbor is a tree hugger, say, and, and that bush shouldn't have taken, been taken out. And maybe it's an invasive species and it needs to be taken out. But everybody thinks any plant is, you know, they're, they don't understand. And I, I just don't see it. It's in your best interest for your property to maintain it so it holds value. And, um, I just don't see any need for that ordinance, that to be in the ordinance if it's not needed. So maybe, maybe we need more of a legal definition before we a- react on it.
Okay, thank you.
More comfortable.
Thank you. Abby?
I'd like to make a motion and if someone could second it, and, and I can explain why I'm making this motion. Um, and so I make a motion to approve this ordinance amendment with two changes. Fifty foot setback is changed to seventy-five foot setback. And quote, shall maintain vegetation growing therein is changed to must maintain vegetation growing therein. Uh, in section twenty five point four five.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I apologize, I, my internet went kaput for a few moments and I was out of the, the picture for a minute. I know I missed part of the discussion. Was there something about the fifty foot versus seventy-five that I missed?
Probably, um. Bill, Bill does not want to have to comply with the Dane County, version because he's not convinced that we're part or we're required to comply under Dane County's regulations. Randy, did you have something you wanted to add? I saw your hand.
I did, but my internet on my work computer side just totally blew out on me. So it's going to take me a minute to get pulled up what I had on the, on my screen. I'm sorry.
Okay. Abby had made a motion that she's looking for someone to second. Because I think she's going to want to discuss something. Do you want to explain it more before you get a second? Which is kind of irregular, but.
Sure, yeah, if I can. Um, so basically, um, chapter four of our comprehensive plan states that the village is responsible for administering regulations designed to protect the environment and private property from flooding and other natural hazards. The village will continue, will work to communicate these regulations early in development review processes. Apply them uniform, uniformly in the geographic jurisdiction within which each applies and clarify and justify these regulations. And I share that quote because, um, I'm not so sure about the justify these regulations, at least how this amendment is currently written. And that's why I proposed the two changes. Uh, the first one relating to, um, I, I, I propose that we keep the seventy-five foot setback that was, that was currently under, um, county regulations. Uh, because I've talked to a lot of village residents these last few months and years and have never heard a concern about the county shoreline zoning requirements from people that live along the river and et cetera. Um, my understanding is the main motivation for pursuing this change is to allow property owners along the river more flexibility in how they use their property, um, which I totally understand. But I, I don't think that these changes are needed at, um, at least to the extent that it would benefit overall public interest. I think the public interest would be better served if we keep the current setback of seventy-five feet in order to make sure any future development along the river currently within the village or annexed in the future has a big enough buffer to protect the river and nearby trees and the wildlife habitat. And then regarding the change that I proposed for the vegetative buffer, it currently says, you know, property owners shall maintain vegetation growing therein. I think it makes it sound like it's fairly optional. And the, the county regulations said that, um, any changes to the vegetation is prohibited. And so to make it more clear and more, um, I guess mandatory, I propose that we say must maintain vegetation growing therein. For the purpose of water quality and flood prevention, flood, flood prevention purposes. Um, I do agree with like the vast majority of what's in the amendment and appreciate the work that Randy, Mark, Al, the P and Z committee have done on it. I just, uh, would feel more comfortable if we had those two changes in the, uh, ordinance amendment. And I'm wondering if anyone seconds that.
Okay, we don't see a second to it at this point. Other comments or questions? Randy?
Thank you. Sorry about that, uh, earlier. I guess I can't always depend on our technology. Um, the one thing, um, I wanted to throw out there, um, is that with that vegetative, um, buffer zone, one of the comments that's on the redlined, uh, version, uh, of the ordinance that, uh, Mark put in there is that, um, uh, P and Z discussion, uh, regarding the previous vegetative buffer zone provisions. They, they had concerns about that and asked that the vegetate, vegetative buffer zone, uh, requirements for the village be reduced from the county standards to meet the minimum state standards. So these, so the vegetation requirements meet the minimum state standards. From what I gather.
Have that available if you'd like me to put it on the screen.
That would be fantastic, although.
That's what you're talking about, Randy?
Uh, yes, I think it's very small on my screen here.
Oh, and I just made it smaller, sorry.
That's okay. No, you're, you're okay.
This is better.
Yeah, so, uh, it'd be the first comment, um, under the vegetative buffer, area where Mark had it describes the statutes. I think. My old eyes are failing me a bit.
Remember this discussion.
Yeah, there's just a, this, there's a lot of pieces that are involved with it. So, and, and Bill does make a point, the state, county, village, all of it across the board. It gets a little bit harried. But I believe, I'm interpreting this and, and I'm not a hundred percent though, but that the, um, proposal in this ordinance, was something that the P and Z wanted, so it wasn't as restrictive as the county, but met the minimum standards for the state statutes. That's my interpretation of it.
Okay, on page twenty, it says, under statutes, counties but not villages have to have any vegetative buffer zone requirements. That's comment MR four.
But, so to Al.
While all this was going on, I did spend a little time looking through the statutes. Um, in this ordinance, a vegetative buffer zone is not required. I would point out though, that no buffer zone is required on land that's already been developed. It's only, uh, vegetation that existed in two thousand fifteen, I think it is, that, uh, that this would preserve. So, um, this basically would prohibit people from clear cutting what's there now. It wouldn't require them to, uh, install a new buffer, uh, area.
Correct. But that was my understanding, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. Jim?
Thank you. I wanted to say thank Abby for her sentiment about protecting the river. Cause I think it's very important too. But I also want to mention that I think the ways that we do that for the villages are stormwater ordinance. We've got one of the best ones in my opinion as far as protection of this, the Yehara River. And I purposely did not second her motion because I know the seventy-five foot setback does impact buildings. I remember looking at that in, in P and Z, that's why we chose the fifty foot. That's all I had.
And does everyone, do you want to clarify what impacting buildings meant?
So there was locations that we were scaling off of DCI map, the distance from the Yehara River to different sheds. And fifty foot seemed to be the distance that most of the sheds, at least that we've looked at, were farther away from the river. And if we would have went to seventy-five foot, it would have created a situation where you're, say, grandfathering those sheds. So they could no, no longer be improved in the future and things like that.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions, uh, Bill?
Yeah, I'll make an emotion to approve this ordinance, uh, with, with, uh, taking out of the vegetative buffer requirements.
All right, I'm not sure, can we do that?
Yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes. I can second it if that's appropriate.
Sure, and, and then we can discuss it. So we have a motion and a second to approve with the removal of the vegetative buffer zone. Abby?
Can I just ask to clarify, does that mean that i- if, if we took that out, does that mean that there would be no vegetated buffer requirement, both at, from the village level and the county level?
If this ordinance is approved, there won't be any regulations at the county level.
I, I'm, I'm going to be voting no on taking out the vegetative buffer. There's just too many benefits and if it's already, if we're saying that just basically maintain what's our, what's already there up to two thousand fifteen, that seems reasonable and I don't, I don't. two thousand fifteen, that seems reasonable and I don't, I don't imagine many people that would have a problem with that.
Thank you. Bill?
Uh, even without the vegetative buffer, um, say somebody wants to develop the land, they're still gonna have to have an erosion plan. I believe, uh, unless somebody can correct me on that. So it's not like they're gonna strip the land and all the dirt's gonna go down in the river, lake, or whatever. They're still gonna have to have plan. Uh, even in my backyard, I can't open it up and have dirt flowing everywhere. And it, and it's in the landowner's best interest to to uh preserve the land in the, in their best ability. Yeah, you might get a, a scotflow here or there, but it's just an, an unneeded another unneeded uh hindrance on a property owner. And uh, it's not like, it's not like we're gonna cut the trees down and whatever. It's, it's just another hindrance.
Let, let's me just suggest though that in a, there's more to the vegetative buffer than just when you're building. Um, you know, let's see, you use um fertilizer on your lawns or your gardens or you know, you have other kinds of, of things that run through your properties and, and go into the water. And the buffer vegetation helps to slow some of that down. So I think that it's also environment water protection of, um, by using um vegetation as part of that process. I'm no scientist by any means, but um, you know, I, I did a lot of Clean Water Act and Clean Water um work and I, I, I think we've made a lot of progress in cleaning up our, our waterways. And one of the tools is vegetation. Just one woman's thoughts. Colleen?
Well, I'm looking at the definition of vegetative buffer zone, or I should say the purpose in the county ordinance. And it says to protect water quality, fish and wildlife habitat. And uh natural scenic beauty, promote preservation and restoration of native vegetation. Consider sound forestry and soil conservation, including erosion and uh prevent the flow of effluents, sediments and nutrients. And I don't see how I could be against that, so. I'm in favor of a vegetative buffer zone. And it does allow for invasive species and whatnot to be uh cut out of those buffer zones.
All right. Any other comments? Otherwise, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Jim?
Well, I'm also for a vegetated buffer. And I guess I am bringing up the question because I guess I could attempt to amend the current motion. Or do we want to do a vote on the current motion and potentially do a follow-up motion? Yes, I'm just asking procedural wise.
Um, I mean, we could attempt to amend it. Um, I'm not sure what the amendment looks like, Al.
E- either way works. The amendment could be offered to reinstate the language in the draft ordinance related to vegetative buffers or uh not, in which case you take a vote on the motion that's been presented. Um, and if that fails, another motion could be made.
I guess I would like to make a motion to reinstate the, the vegetative buffers as proposed.
So you'd like to, Bill, to amend his motion to reinstate the vegetative buffer zone?
He's moving.
I, yeah, I'm moving to amend, so it's not asking Bill, it's asking for a second.
I'll second.
Colleen? All right. So.
Discussion and then a vote on the amendment.
We have a, a motion and a second to approve with the reinstatement of the vegetative buffer zone. So we vote on that one first.
No, the motion, the motion right now is just to amend, so.
Okay.
Termiter vote would simply put the language from the draft ordinance back in for purposes of the main motion, which you'll then discuss.
Okay, all right, got it. I'm dense, but I got it. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I guess I still don't understand what, and what are, like, are we voting on Bill's motion or on, on?
No, we're, we're voting on an amendment that would bring the original motion back to what was written.
Okay. And then we'll discuss that.
Rock down, right.
A, a yes vote on Trustee Simpson's motion would mean that the motion on the floor is to approve the ordinance as originally drafted.
Okay, wait a minute. I thought it was to just put the language back in there and then vote on that.
Yeah, there'll be two votes.
It would be two.
Okay, there'd be two votes.
The motion, one that includes the entire ordinance.
Okay, everybody know what we're voting on right now? Not sure I do, but let's go ahead. All those in favor of Jim's motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
No.
No.
Okay, the ayes have it. So.
Now, the motion on the floor is to approve the ordinance as drafted.
Okay, and now that we're voting on that, so.
Let's just further discussion.
All right, is it, it's Steve?
Is there a typo in one? Except that in owner may remove vegetation?
Yes.
I'm glad I could help.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, we've corrected. We, we, we appreciate editing. Thank you. Rebecca?
Can we just, can I just get some cl- clarification on the vegetative buffer zone? Um, what I'm understanding is that anything that was existing as of twenty fifteen needs to be maintained with the exception that you can use up, like a thirty percent clearing up to that, what was it, two hundred feet?
Correct.
Whichever is lesser. And um, but everything else has to be maintained. What does maintain exactly mean? I know what it means up north at my cabin. What does it mean right here? I'm, I'm assuming it's gonna be the same in that I just can't take it out of there. Is that all that means by maintain?
I would say yes. The only thing that would be an exception to that is if there's an invasive species or
Right.
Something that causes imminent danger to, you know, somebody to safety. Um, those items could be removed, but maintain would be to continue the condition that it's in now. If it's not invasive or um, a safety issue.
So what if they wanted to add some shore rocks? Is that allowed or not allowed? That actually helps with erosion, but, but it does change that buffer zone a little bit.
But I don't, I don't think rocks are considered vegetative, but I guess I'll have to lean on Al on that.
I guess my interpretation would be that you're probably, you probably don't have trees growing up to the edge of the water. You're probably gonna put the rocks closest to the water, so it's probably not a conflict with the buffer area. But if there is, um, as long as you're not taking out any vegetative area, uh, I would say this ordinance does not prohibit you from putting rocks down.
And how far back from the shore does that vegetative buffer have to go?
I believe it's thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Well, your rocks would be a man-made structure cuz you're bringing in uh, material.
Exactly. I know up, up north, we have to it's a tricky situation up there sometimes.
Alan and Jim?
I was just gonna say, uh, materials like rocks are not structures. Structures are something constructed for a purpose.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
I was just gonna add, if you're bringing in rocks, you're probably affecting the flood plain, so you're gonna be getting into different ordinances and different statutes.
All right, so now we're dealing with a motion to approve the ordinance. That's, that's what's on the floor.
Is that with my uh vegetative buffer off, is the original motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
Wait a second, before the vote, I just wanted to verify what Bill just said because we amended it to put the vegetation buff, buffers back in.
Right. Right, yeah.
Yes, a yes.
So it's really Bill's original motion, but we changed it to put the buffers back in, so it's.
I think that's what he said, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Make sure.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, opposed?
No.
Okay, the ayes have it, motion carries.
I'm sorry, who was the second no? Was that you, Abby, or?
Yeah, Abby, yeah.
Thank you.
I think we're like years delinquent in passing this thing, so. Good that we're getting it done, so.
Nobody will ever understand it.
It's a lot that they can.
It is.
Thank you, guys.
Bill, I worked with it for seven years, so.
Oh, I believe it.
Been around a long time. Okay, moving on. Ten point one. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero four six, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of title to various excess real estate parcels held by the CDA. Michelle?
Hi, yes, uh, the resolution there was very short and sweet and de- but descriptive. Thank you, Al. Um, that basically the CDA, um, when it was created, assumed ownership of things that were the former redevelopment authorities. And so we found out um through investigation, there were uh seven parcels that um you have in your packet there. Um, some are public roadways, things that don't have redevelopment or housing real potential. Uh, and so we are, the CDA had decided to um transfer them back to the village. And so they voted to do that at their last meeting, and this is, um, this would be the village accepting those um parcels. And then if you did vote to accept them, um, the next step would be that um the village administrator could um, uh authorize uh the deeds for those. Al, does that sound about right?
It's close enough, yeah. What Steve would be, would be accepting the deeds and recording them.
Thank you.
All right, are there questions? And, and I emphasize, these are not parcels that a lot can be done with, although they could be useful at some point. Widening a street or doing an access or, you know, a variety of other small reasons. So I would ask if there are any questions. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to accept the parcels of, of land from the CDA.
Rebecca moves to accept the uh, the resolution as proposed.
Abby second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, same sign. Resolution passed, motion carries. All right, thank you, Michelle. All right, um. Police Commission, Deforestry, Fire Board Minutes, Community Development Authority Minutes, and the Deforestry Community and Senior Center um, minutes are in your packets um for reading. I don't think we need to go through any of those right now unless people have questions or comments. Okay. Administrators' report, Steve?
Nothing to report.
Okay, um, President's report. We have a couple of things on my report this time. The first is the um board operating principles, which are put in front of us once a year at least. Um, and, and I really like them. And I have to admit that I probably didn't read them closely enough in other years, so I wanted to bring them up and talk about them. Poor Luke, hearing from me, why don't I know these, about these better? And it's in part because it's the kind of thing that we often just kind of brush over as a board. And um, I want people to pay attention to them. They're, they're important principles for how we operate and treat one another as trustees. Um, so I, I encourage people to take the time to, to read them and understand them. And I think that they're, they're wonderful um principles for us to to pay attention to when we're dealing with controversy, when we're carrying out the business of the board or interacting with the, the the public. So particularly like um, some of the, the principles that talk about how we do decision-making, what kind of quality interaction we have, and um handling pu- how we handle public concerns, so. You know, I, I hope that people do take, take the time. We, I would also like us to accept them. Approve, we need an approval motion um for, for the principles. So I put them in front of you tonight for action. So could I get a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this to Seidra.
We have a motion back to Seidra. Do we have a second?
Bill second.
I think Abby got in there first, Bill. You gotta be a little quicker. Abby seconded. Any further discussion or questions, comments? Abby?
Um, I just wanna say, I think it's under number seven. Uh, one of the last bullet points under there about like, if you cast a dissenting vote to share you know, your, your reason. Um, and I always appreciate when people do that because a- as a trustee because, you know, if they have a concern or see the issue a little bit differently than me. Um, I like to know that because I, I wait until I'm at the meeting and it's like, you know, decision time to really know how I'm gonna vote. And so if somebody has like a really, really big concern, like I'd like to know about it, not necessarily like it may change my vote, it might not, but um, I won't know unless, you know, someone shares that. So I always appreciate when someone says that. And then um, and then I had a question about uh, under, the last bullet point under principle two. Um, we will not use the media for our own personal agenda regarding village matters. And I had a question about that cuz I, I have to figure out if, if and when I might possibly do this. But I had the thought of like, maybe doing a letter to the editor, to the local paper about our um uh comprehensive plan update, especially if we have another community input session. Like just, you know, basically saying why I think that how, like my view about how I, important I think the comprehensive plan update is and how important it is to get community input and that, I'm guessing if I wrote it, that would be the gist of it. And I'm assuming that's okay under that principle, but I just wanted to double check, cuz I don't, I don't feel like it's a personal agenda and I, and I'll make clear that I'm only doing it from my individual standpoint, but um, I was thinking about doing that and I just wanted to double check.
It's a good question, Abby. Um. Not just in, in addressing your point, but to start with, generally, press related to items, village, village operations, policy, et cetera, are handled um either by my, myself, Cory generally first, or Steve. Somebody um should go through, through one of those entities first. It may end up that you're part of, part of that, that process, but it's important to, to allow um folks who have the responsibility to speak on behalf of the village to, to, to do that. Um, I guess, I, it's a fine line when it's a personal opinion or when, you know, when it's with village business. I, I think that just saying a comprehensive plan is a good idea um and important and inviting comment is. um, and important and inviting comment is, is probably an, an okay thing. But I open it up to others who are more experienced than I am to comment on that. Um, Steve, Corey, Judd, you've been involved in this for a long time. How touchy does it get if someone writes a letter to the editor of that nature? Wow, nobody wants to.
Sounds like a legal comment, question to me.
Al? You're good.
Yeah, I mean, this, this really isn't a legal document. It's a set of principles that guide the board's behavior. But i- if you read it literally, I would, I would say that a letter to the editor by one trustee commenting on a policy position in the village would probably be prohibited by that sentence, the way it's worded. I don't know how. And I don't know if there's a consistent definition of personal agenda. But I think everybody here has an agenda. They've got their views on things. They've got their, their slants on things. Um, and I think anytime you would make a comment on a, on a policy question, you're bringing your own biases to the table when you do that.
Yep. Bill?
And I agree. Um, there is a fine line. But it's people's interpretation of feelings and, and writings and things like that. And I, I have a bias. Everybody has a bias, but sometimes your bias, you're representing the village. And that's when it gets to be a fine line. I, I would hope that I would be told I was out of the line or somebody, another trustee was out of line. It's, it's, it's just common sense a lot of times, but uh if it's a village policy, I would like it to come from Steve or Corey or President Wolfgram, you speak for the board. You, of course, are biased. But uh, as I am, and it, you have, everybody has, they have an opinion. But you're the spokesperson for the board. Steve is probably the spokesperson for the village. And between you guys, I think you should be presenting to the public as unbiased as could be uh, position. I just, it's just too much of a fine line.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Sorry, missed the button. Uh, yeah, I, I agree with what's been stated because as a village trustee and a member of this board, yes, we have our private voice, but at the same time, the people of this village look at us as members of this board. And we need to be very careful that um, the perception of the public is not always the same perception that we, we think we're projecting. And if we're talking about something that is related to a policy or whatever that we're discussing on the board, we need to be extremely careful because the public can look at what you say as an individual and they'll perceive it as you talking for the board. And we need to be super careful about that.
It's a great point. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the principles. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Somebody then like it. Motion carries. All right.
Jane, if the record could show, I just abstained. I don't really understand what, what the purposes I do plan on following all the ethics codes. I just don't understand enforcement of it and different things. I abstained.
Okay.
Jane, as part of the um document, there, each trustee is meant to provide their preferred method of communication. So if they have an issue, they want to be reached out by phone, by email, that type of thing.
Did, did you guys?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Colleen, of course.
I just noted, yes, not even considering abstaining. And I completely agree with what Jim just said. Can I change my vote or not? I mean, we've had this for as long as I've been on the board. That's fine.
We have to reconsider.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we can just change the vote. We may have to vote a new. Al?
I, I don't recall. Did you say that the motion carried or did you not comment on that yet? If you said the motion carried, then a motion to reconsider would be necessary. If you haven't declared the vote yet, anybody can change their vote.
I don't know if I said it or not, to be real honest, but I don't believe I did. Did you hear me say it, Lou?
I don't recall.
I don't either.
I don't think you did.
Okay.
I think the dog barked.
Oh, yeah, the dog barked.
Yeah.
The dog.
It's not that big a deal. I mean, I certainly would not vote against it. I just like Jim's reasoning. It's like, yeah. Let it, yes. I don't want to make life difficult.
So this code of conduct, just for discussion point real, real quick. Is this considered your ethics? I thought that was part of the
that.
Or is that, it, or is it a combined with the ethics codes?
The code of conducts, code of conduct, the code is in fact enforceable and it is.
Okay, it is part of the ethics.
Yes, yeah.
Got it. That's what I was considering.
These are operating principles. Designed to help us think about being good, good corporate citizens. Um, and, and to treat one another respectfully and to talk about communication and you know, how we're going, going to interact at meetings and with the village. Judd?
I just, this, this came about before I was president, but there was, uh, my understanding, there was a lot of acrimony amongst board members and a lot of, uh, not the best relations. And this was a way in which to, everybody to work and operate off of the same guiding principles and how they would proceed forward with their role as a trustee. Um, and to hopefully make it so everybody's playing off the same playbook. And everybody has a good basis for which to go about doing their work as a trustee. Whether you want to continue that or not, it's completely up to you. I'm just telling you where that came from. There was never really a mechanism for enforcement. Um, it was more just to say, hey, we all agreed to this once a year when new trustees come on board. Um, and we could kind of, you know, shame someone or hold them accountable to saying you voted for this, but yet you're violating it. Um, that's where that, this came from was because there was not, there was some, a lot of acrimony amongst board members many, many, many years ago.
Wouldn't enforcement be through the Ethics Committee?
Well, Al.
The, the Board Operating Principles are basically a social compact that you have amongst yourselves. And you say, I'm gonna be nice to you, you be nice to me. I'm not gonna do this. You don't do that to me. The ethics code is different. The ethics code is the law. It's an ordinance that is enforceable. There are penalties for violating it. Um, there are no penalties for violating this other than the people that you promised that you'd follow them will be, that is happy with you if you don't.
Okay.
That's about it.
That sounds good. I just wanted to know how, how it was.
Sort of a covenant, you know, a covenant between all of us that, that says we're gonna be nice to one another. The one, the one thing that Lou has asked is she needs to know how we want to be communicated with. Was that your question, Lou? By email or phone?
The principal state that you have to state what your preferred communication method is.
So how do you want us to get you that information?
I can say your name and you can just say how you prefer to talk, be spoken with.
All right.
Say like, what are our options? Email, phone. Face to face, I guess.
Okay.
Okay, so Abby?
Uh, I would say run of the mill communication, just email. But if it's like something more complicated and more sensitive, probably phone call or face to face.
Colleen?
Face to face.
Jim?
I would say I check my emails approximately weekly. So if it has that long of a delay by email, but a phone call, we prefer it if it's shorter timeframe.
Uh, Rebecca? Uh, typically email, but if it's more of an emergency type situation, then, you know, like a sensitive timeframe than by phone. Kay?
Um, a phone call would be fine.
Bill?
Uh, email. I don't hang on to my phone like some people do, like it's the end of the world. So if it's a real emergency, of course, try and get me on the phone. But uh, so you know, if you want to get together, set something up with email and we could either talk or in person, but uh, email would be probably the best.
And Jane?
Both, either, it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I think we got through this one.
Woof woof.
The next, the next item under the President's Report are appointments to committees, commissions, and boards. Um, I've spoken with, with many of you about, about these, and there are still a few in process, not, not with, with you all, but with some um, community appointments. So this will be ongoing. Um, but you should have received the um memo. Thank you, Lou, for putting, putting these together um, for me. And um, we need to approve them. So. Bill?
Just a question. Uh, on the BZA, I was listed last year as an alternate. And I don't see that designation this year. I was just wondering if I was gonna be full blown member or still remain an alternate?
Yes.
Of, be a full blown.
Full blown, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Other questions? If not, I'd be looking.
Quick question, quick question. Um, I, 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 I approve them, but I just had a question. As far as um, how do I figure out when some of these meeting, these things meet, like the um, uh, what's the, there's one, like that ad hoc committee, how do I know when those meet?
The ad hoc committees haven't set up meetings yet, but the, the thing to do is to, for standing committees, there, it'll be on the website. So you can go in and read about the committee and, and their meeting times will be there.
And are they all virtual at this point?
The library meets in person.
Yes. Um, the library does, you're right. But the rest of them are all, at this point, pretty much virtual. I don't.
Okay.
Um, but then I would recommend calling the staff person for the committee. Um, and you know, they'll clarify meeting times and.
Is that stated on the website, which, which staff member?
Yeah. And if you have any questions, call me or Lou.
Okay, thank you. Jane, I just, one clarification, the BZA, Bill Landgraf's term is still alternate one until September twenty twenty three.
Oh, I stand corrected.
Sorry, Bill.
That's why I asked.
No, that was, and thank you, Lou. All right. Once again, I leave the meeting saying it takes a village to run these meetings. Here we go. Um. Any other questions or I would entertain a motion to approve?
You don't need a motion.
I don't.
She needs a vote to confirm the appointments.
Oh, okay. I thought she just said, uh, make the motion and we approve, uh, there wasn't a second.
Oh, you want me to make?
Make a motion to approve.
They have motion and it's, do we have a second?
Second, Rebecca.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right.
Jane, I got a question or follow up question. Are you looking for additional people for the ad hoc? If we know people, should we have them reach out to you?
Yeah, at this point, just, yeah, give me a call. Um, we'll, we'll get a list going.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, moving on. All right, um, I'd entertain a motion. Oh, no, we need to go into closed session and it'll be a roll call. We need a motion though, don't we?
Yeah, Abby makes a motion.
We have a motion by Abby.
A second.
Second by Bill. Roll call, please.
Yes, Abby.
Aye.
Colleen?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rebecca?
Aye.
Tashira?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Marsh.
Here we are.
Howdy, howdy.
All right, they'd be here.
All right, we're back into to open session and we're dealing with the action resulting from the closed session. And it's resolution twenty twenty one dash zero four seven, resolution approving a settlement agreement with Walgreens, um, Inc.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Resolution. Motion by Bill.
Rebecca's second.
Rebecca's second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, I would ask, is there any other business that lawfully comes before the board? If not, yes, Jim?
Um, I don't know lawfully business, but I wanted to mention to the board that I've been part of the Friends of the Hair River Headwaters for a number of years. And it's been inactive for the last couple. And we are actually getting back together to try to get that back active. So we're looking for future members to carry that forward. Some of the past members are attempting that. So if anybody's interested, let me know and hopefully you'll find out more information as we move forward in the next couple of months.
Good. All right, anything else? All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Sarah's second?
Abby's second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned at seven thirty four.